Thank you. Dr. Benitez, can you hear us?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Board of Education regular meeting. It is August twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. Let's have the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Next on our agenda is public participation. Welcome to the Board of Education regular meeting. Regular meetings are a time for the board to conduct its business. As the Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. The board may hear public participation for up to sixty minutes. Public participation shall be limited to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. One speaker cannot yield their time to another speaker. There will be no responses this evening to any questions or concerns raised. They will be referred to the administration for review. As adults, we serve as positive role models for our students. Please be respectful of people. We ask speakers not to make defamatory comments or use abusive or vulgar language. Dr. White?
Our first speaker is Attorney Person Hope McFadden.
Good evening. I won't be long. I didn't prepare anything. I'm just coming back from vacation. Retirement's so much fun. Fifth vacation, one more to go. I came here today because, first, I would like to say that I saw the pictures online about the outing at the lighthouse. Some people, I'm sure, enjoyed it, and some were concerned that the money that was spent on that could have been used for supplies in school. I just hope that when teachers go into contract negotiations coming soon, that we can find money to give them the needed raises and not raise their medical benefits to the point that they can't afford them. Also, I'm kind of concerned about the fact that we still have ninety openings in the district. I know that it was requested of the union, by the union, I mean, to allow for one more year for the medical benefits package, and I know that was turned down. So I'm quite sure a lot of teachers did retire in order to take advantage of that package. It was too good to pass up for many people, but now you're in a deficit. And it can't be to say that you save money by getting rid of the retired teachers because I've looked on the blue sheet, and many of those people that you did hire are still making what I made when I left, so...
Mr. Chair. Point of order. That certainly is a great discussion, but it's not on the agenda.
What?
And your discussion of the teachers' benefits. And it's probably better discussing negotiations.
I can't even be a part of negotiations because I'm...
It's a point of order, so...
I'm retired. I can't even be there.
You rule on it. She's not supposed to say anything while you're ruling on it.
So I received your point of order, so I would like you to finish your comment and also keep it to the items on the agenda that you can speak on, please.
I've never seen that before, so that's going to get to my last point about you making up of policies. Again, I cannot even be a part of negotiations. I'm just looking out for my former colleagues and asking that you take care of them. I never even seen it on the agenda where I can discuss it, ever. I've been to a lot of these board meetings. I am very disappointed, I will say, with my district because there is money, you know, we still don't have a balanced budget from last year. That is on the agenda. I looked at it. So I'm very disappointed. We need to kind of get ourselves together. Now, the last thing I want to bring up, since we're talking about policies, and I need you to look at this policy. Since I made a complaint to this board last year, and I didn't get a chance to type this up, again, like I said, I've been on vacation, but I will type it up and send it to the board. I made a complaint, and then I received something...
Time.
So please finish your sentence.
I received something last month saying that the investigation is ended because I retired. I didn't see any of that in the policies, that an investigation can be ended because I retired. That doesn't even make sense. It was never even completed. I'm not finished yet. That wasn't even completed yet. I need you all to look into that, and I need, I also would like to let you know...
Mr. Chair, three minutes are the allotted time for each person.
I haven't finished my last comment. I'm almost finished.
Please finish your last sentence.
Thank you. I need you to look into that and also understand that if it is not resolved, and I'll need you to send it to the superintendent or to HR. I need you to look into it, understand if it's not, I will escalate it. I will escalate the complaint.
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just for people coming forward, public comment is not a time to make threats. Thank you. You're out of order, but I'll let the president deal with it.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Dr. White?
Our next speaker is online, Kelly Brennan.
Good evening, Mayor Eilacher, Superintendent Nagron, and board members. I'm Kelly Brennan, the majority owner of Cheapscapes, on behalf of myself and co-owner Robert Brennan. We sent the board a letter to address misconceptions about Cheapscapes and have since revised it. I'll read it now. The purpose of this letter is to provide accurate information regarding Cheapscapes Landscaping LLC. Cheapscapes is a small business minority contractor participating in Lill Snyder's Small Contractors Development Program. For the past five years, Cheapscape has provided landscape maintenance services... Excuse me? Cheapscapes has provided landscape maintenance services under contract to New Haven Public Schools. During this time, the company maintained twenty-one New Haven schools grounds professionally without any formal complaints. Previous statements made at Board of Education meetings were inaccurate and unfair. We request information on the criteria used to evaluate Cheapscape's performance as a landscape contractor over the past five years. We would also like clarification regarding the comment made by a board member that Cheapscape has done us wrong, and the executive director of Facilities who stated, "I agree, Cheapscape is not a good vendor." This Board of Education has repeatedly asked the facilities' management vendor for a contractor performance evaluation system. To our knowledge, no such evaluation system has ever been implemented. Cheapscape has not received any documentation indicating unsatisfactory contract performance. Their comments are based on a snow-related incident that is not connected to or indicative of our landscaping work. How did he reach that conclusion without any formal evaluation, documentation, prior experience with Cheapscape, or time on the job? The SCD supports small minority and women-owned construction business in New Haven County, helping them grow and succeed on local projects. Cheapscape does not hold any additional landscaping contracts and is consistently focused on offering the best services solely to New Haven intended to provide value. We have developed a strong rapport with school staff, principals, and members of Local Two Eighty Seven. We support a fair evaluation system that applies consistent standard to all vendors and measures overall performance and not isolated snow incidents. We suggest you evaluate us on our entire landscaping performance, which is undeniably very good. Cheapscape is the low-qualified bidder for the landscaping contract that is currently on the agenda for approval. Cheapscape has delivered reliable landscaping services for five years without any reported concerns. Claims that we're not a reputable company are incorrect, unfounded, prejudicial, and slanderous. The available facts for the landscaping contracts indicate a consistent service history that does not support these undocumented claims. The board should award the contract to Cheapscape based on the competitive bidding process and implement a fair evaluation system that monitors and documents all contractors equally. Choose Cheapscape for landscaping backed by five years of reliable servicing results. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Dr. President, that concludes all raised hands and all signed up speakers.
Thank you very much, and thank you for participating in public comment. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of August eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Downer, Mr. Wilcox. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez? He's not here. Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Mayor Eilacher?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion carries. Thank you. Next is the personnel report of Dr. Nagron. Dr. Nagron?
Good evening, Board Chair and Board members. Before I ask for the approval of tonight's personal report, I do want to take a moment to highlight the following cabinet-level appointment on tonight's personal report, and that is for Ms. Alicia Perrin, who I am looking for your support for her to be appointed as the next Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Leadership and School Improvement. Ms. Perrin began her career in two thousand and two at Reed School in Bridgeport, teaching language arts and serving as a special education resource teacher. She later taught language arts at Blackham School, where she also earned her Master's of Education from the University of New England and a certificate of advanced studies in educational administration from Sacred Heart University. A proven instructional leader, Ms. Perrin has served in multiple leadership capacities, including Site Coordinator for the Lighthouse Program, co-facilitator of the New Teacher Academy in partnership with Teachers College at Columbia University, and participant in the Administrator Aspirant Program and the Leadership Institute. In two thousand and ten, she was appointed Assistant Principal at Paul Lawrence Dunbar School, becoming principal for four years later. Throughout her tenure, she has been deeply engaged in advancing literacy in school improvement, participating in initiatives such as the Literacy Leadership Institute, Connecticut Lead for Turnaround Principals, and the REITCon Literacy Initiative with the Connecticut State Department of Education. Ms. Perrin earned her Connecticut O-Ninety-three Superintendent Certification through Sacred Heart University's Executive Educational Leadership Program in two thousand and nineteen and was appointed interim superintendent of Bridgeport Public Schools in November two thousand and twenty-two. In addition to her district leadership, she has served as a regional evaluator and instructor for the Connecticut Office of Higher Education's Alternative Route to Certification Program. She works with a local nonprofit, supporting the social-emotional well-being of students through sports and education. Her commitment to understanding educational impacts endeavors settings extend beyond Connecticut. Ms. Perrin participated in an international education fellowship in Finland, studying high-performing school systems and best practices in teaching, leadership, and equity. She has also partnered with nonprofits, such as Strategies for Youth, advancing initiatives that promote social-emotional wellness, civic engagement, and leadership development for young people. She is currently pursuing her PhD in education management at Hampton University, guided by her educational philosophy, "Every child, every chance, every day." Ms. Perrin brings a relentless commitment to equity, instructional excellence, and leadership development to her new role as Assistant Superintendent, which I hope you will support tonight. Thank you. And with that, I ask for approval of the personnel report.
Thank you. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes, I move. We approve the action items of the superintendent's personnel report.
Second.
Thank you. That has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Dr. Joyner?
First of all, let me commend Dr. Nagron for finding a person that I know about. She may not know about me, but I was a professor, and I was in charge of the Master of Arts in Teaching program at Sacred Heart. And I did a lot of volunteer work in Bridgeport schools. This young lady has had an outstanding trajectory of teacher, assistant principal, acting superintendent. If they were smart, they would have made a superintendent, assistant superintendent. And she has a lived experience that is tailor-made for urban education because she's a product of urban education, and she knows all of the issues inside and outside of schools. Another thing that I won't talk about in detail is that she's highly moral and ethical. Somebody may remember of a problem in one of the schools in Bridgeport involving inappropriate financial handup. And she was brave enough to expose that. And those are the kind of people we need in our school system. People that know about the lives of the kids and the parents and the families. They know about the support system for urban education, which is inadequate. And they also know how to manage people respectfully and also to conform to ethics and all of those interactions. So I am very happy, and I believe that we have hit the lottery with this appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. We will vote. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Ailey?
Yes.
Mayor Eilacher?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion carries.
Pressing Yarborough, may we invite Ms. Perrin up to say a few words?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank you all for having tonight Mayor Eilacher, Dr. Nagron, and members of the board in the school community. I am so pleased to be a part of the work that you guys are going to be doing here in New Haven Public Schools. It reminds me so much of everything I've done as an educator in urban districts and really wanting to continue that work to support each and every student, the community, and help make sure that we are making the difference and impact each and every day. So thank you for your trust and trusting me with the responsibility to be a part of the work here. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. I move that we enter executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute one dash two zero zero six E and one dash two one zero B ten for a discussion which would result in the disclosure of attorney-client privileged records. Sarah Second?
Second.
Thank you. May we clarify who is to come to the meeting, please?
I am asking that Dr. White join us in the executive session and Attorney Alexi Addis.
Thank you. We will vote. Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Ailey?
Yes.
Mayor Eilacher?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. We're in executive session.
Thank you.
Yes, okay. Thank you. The board is returned from executive session and no votes foretaken. Next on the agenda is the Finance and Operations Committee. Mr. Wilcox?
All right, thank you. Um, before I get started, I'm just gonna have to first move the four resolutions. I've been asked to move those separately simply because of the requirements of the state where this is going, so we need to make it crystal clear that each one was considered separately. So I'll be making those motions. I've been asked to move uh, Contract 7.01 separately. Anything else need to be moved separately this evening? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and get started. First off, these four resolutions, the purpose of these is to close out construction projects. Uh, there'll be more coming in subsequent meetings, but the, the purpose of this is to, the board to say that these projects are completed and so that the city, uh, can recover the funds, um, for these, uh, in the matching, I mean, in the, um, program where the city had to put up money ahead of time for these building projects. So that's the purpose of these. So first I move to we approve Resolution 8.01 where the board accepts the central registration project, state project 093-0366 as complete.
Second? Any discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion carries. Mr. Wilcox?
Thank you. Second, I move that we approve, uh, Resolution 8.02 where the board accepts the New Haven Academy Project State Project 093-0364 as complete.
Second? Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mr. Ailey?
Yes.
Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion carries.
Next I move that we approve Resolution 8.03 where the board accepts the Satellite Kitchen Project State Project 093-0346 as complete.
Second? Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mr. Ailey?
Yes.
Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion carries.
And finally, for these, uh, I move that we approve Resolution 8.04 where the board accepts the Strong School Obama Project which is State Project 093-0368 as complete.
Second? Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mr. Ailey?
Yes.
Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion carries. Mr. Wilcox?
Thank you. Next I move that we approve Contract 7.01 regarding landscaping.
Second? Mr. Wilcox? Or any discussion? Mr. Wilcox?
Thank you. First on this, I want to thank my colleagues for raising issues around quality concerns related to how we document that work is being done with our vendors. And I'm happy to see as part of this that, um, there is a system in place that's outlined in the memo for documenting performance that'll generate evidence for future decision-making if that is needed. Uh, because I also like to trust but also verify, uh, I certainly trust that Dr. White and his team are going to monitor as they say they are. But we are going to have in November, one of the November FNO meetings, we will review the, uh, all of the landscaping, um, performance, uh, for this fall so that we can see where things are. And then if there are issues, um, then we will have evidence for which we can move forward and exercise our rights under contracts for removing vendors that aren't doing the work that we set out for them to do. So I'm happy to see that these things are in place and that we're going to be able to have documentation to inform our future decision makings. I will be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Other discussion? Ms. Downer?
Yes. So I just wanted to just say that, um, you know, the vendor that's on the table tonight, um, I'm not going to mention the name, but I will be voting on it tonight. But I wanted to just shed some light on what, since I was on the board for two years, of what we've experienced with vendors that were supposedly doing work for us, particularly around our grounds. Um, from what I saw, I saw an overgrown vegetation along with the grass, um, which also created safety hazards. Um, areas where pests can actually grow, um, distracting our learning environments. Weeds, leaves left in front of emergency exits. I also saw handicap ramps blocked with just vegetation. Um, I've, whoop, no problem. And lastly, um, not to mention the improper health of our soil. Um, one of the things that I'm hoping where we're moving towards, of course, one of the companies has, yes, said they were here for five years. That could be true. But I also know that, um, cutting grass and making sure that the vegetation is low and not present a safety hazard. It can also obscure, obscure visibility where you can't see signs or anything. Um, the overgrowth is a natural consequence in creating green learning, um, spaces. Just last year, our schools experienced egregious overgrowth that did prevent hazards and definitely did not support our outdoor learning and play. I personally do not support privatization, but sometimes we have to have it. I understand that. We have to bridge it. Where we've had our overgrown vegetation that it did create dangerous conditions on our properties and in our community. Cause remember I keep saying that the schools go back to the community. In our effort to move towards climate change, cause that's what we say we're moving towards, right? We should adapt a green schoolyard initiative with trusted vendors that actually can help us integrate our natural fi- nature-filled spaces for learning and play to enhance climate resilience in our overall students' well-being. And if we did that and we picked the vendors based off of their past performance, I'm pretty sure there will be a few that would not be selected. And that's all I have to say today. I will be voting on this. And that's all I have to say today. I will be voting on this tonight. And I know for sure, I took, I have taken pictures. I've asked for lists of these vendors and which schools they have done. And I'm pretty sure that the same vendors that's on today was probably on the list of previously have done our contract. And that's all I gotta say. Just keep in mind, we're supposed to do it right. And I will be checking, so just in case anyone's listening, I will be checking each site. And I trust that the school will be able to, Dr. White and Dr. Nagron, they are serious, because they know we are serious. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Downer. Seeing no further question, no further questions, we will vote. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
An absolute no.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mr. Ailey?
Yes.
Mayor Ellicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, that motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Wilcox?
Thank you. Finally, I move, the main motion here, which is I move that we approve the two memorandums of understanding, the twelve agreements, the two purchase orders, and the remaining four contracts as listed on our agenda.
Second, any discussion? Mayor Ellicker?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment on Item 4.02, the memorandum of understanding between the City of New Haven and the Board of Education for a student and Bus Patrol America regarding a school bus violation detection monitoring enforcement system. I wanted to commend the FNO committee for moving this item forward. And I think this is a real opportunity for us to improve safety for our kids. I, like a lot of parents, I put my children on the bus in the morning during school and somewhat regularly, I see people driving through the stop signs. And this is a, gonna be a significant improvement to ensure that there's more accountability for drivers. And so I wanted to thank the board and encourage them to vote to support this item.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Mayor Ellicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, that motion carries. Does that conclude, Mr. Wilcox?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next, our students' report. Mr. Ailey, anything to share?
I have a lot today.
Uh-oh, okay.
So as I said before regarding the installation of programs, internships, and everything else in that category, I spoke with the college and career team, specifically Ms. Redhans, and I have a little note to share. So we realize that there are many certification, career classes, opportunities in the district. However, some students, and the majority, well, basically the majority of the students, don't necessarily know how to apply and everything. Some of them don't even know they exist. So this year, we're working on bringing that forward, bringing the awareness forward for the high schoolers. So in the first meeting for the student council, we will, me and Ms. Redhans will be conducting a sort of seminar session where students will know what programs are there and everything else. And we also will include a survey, which, which shows what students want to actually learn, whether it's a request for a STEM program and anything of that sorts. Second, I want to announce that with the help of West Haven, we are forming a honor society that is in their district. So hopefully, this board will approve that as a non-paid sort of thing. So this program, not only will it honor the students who work their best around New Haven and surrounding cities, it will also give them experience. They will have the chance to connect with professionals, attend seminars hosted by organizations, discover opportunities they haven't known. This is still in the planning phase, so I don't have anything to give yet. I'm just announcing that we are working on it. And lastly, I'm partnering with Sevaro Health, which is a stroke awareness company and also a neurological institution for neuroscience. We are bringing together awareness for high schoolers, middle schoolers, and elementary about stroke awareness and other things in that category, hopefully. We're probably going to put that with, I forgot which, yeah, that's probably all. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Any discussion? Mr. Ailey, I do want to say, well, thank you for just the different initiatives that you're working on and that you have brought up. What I appreciate, even about the first one you've mentioned, but I think it carries through to all the rest, is that you see an opportunity or a gap and you're working, it sounds like you're working to bring the resources together and to bring the schedule together and to bring the students together to actually make ground in those areas. For instance, I heard you talk about that the students may not be aware of what opportunities are available to them. And to say that you partnered with Ms. Redhannan's to have a meeting, to be able to do a workshop so the students can learn what's available, but then also to do a survey to see what they do know and perhaps what they would like to request is just really thoughtful and skilled leadership. And then lifting up the honor society and other partnerships. So thank you for your work and your leadership with the district and the teams and the other students.
Thank you. And I do have to say one thing, not everything that's requested is gonna exist. Again, we are in a budget deficit in a way. So we're bringing like forward to like the most popular one. I do know that business will definitely partake in that. There's already healthcare and everything as it is, so we're hoping to work with Metro, basically.
Great, that's also very thoughtful. Dr. Benitez?
Yes, oh, thank you very much, Mr. Ali. This, this sounds like you are, students are running. You're not walking towards the beginning of the year, you're running. So I like that. Want to congratulate you on the survey. That's really important. I think the more we know about what students would like to learn, the more we can improve on our offerings. And I must say that many of the things that we offer today is because of students' desire to see certain things or parents or staff. But I have to say that this district is one that likes to listen to children. One thing I have to ask on the neuroscience, are you partnering with any staff member? You, you were talking about the academic things with Ms. Redhannan's, but I, I didn't hear if you are partnering with any of our staff members to channel how you are going to go about doing this, this awareness.
So for the, for the awareness part, I only knew about the company because my science teacher at my school partnered with them at first. They were bringing in stroke awareness things and everything. And then the same organization asked me if I can give awareness and everything else. So I decided to partner with them and make it so not only high schoolers get the experience, but also middle schoolers and children. So I don't, I'm probably work with Ms. Monica Abbott about that. We could have more staff members, I'm not sure. This is still in the plan.
No, Ms. Abbott will be fine. And I was gonna suggest the person who also works with her, which is Tiffany Jackson, but I'm sure that, that it's just a matter of making sure that we adhere to any board policy in terms of partnering with external organizations. But as long as you are working with a staff member, go for it. I think neuroscience is something we have to learn more about and use more. Thank you.
It's not, it's not necessarily neuroscience, it's basically stroke awareness.
Oh, just, just a specific, okay. I would love to hear more about that. If you can send us some information, be great. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll try. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Nagron?
Thank you again. Before I invite our coordinator of recruitment and retention, Ms. Booker, I do want to take a minute just to share our excitement around the opening for this academic year. And I know that Dr. White's gonna be helping me out, but as you may have heard, it was today that we had our Chill and Grill event to welcome back our, our teachers for the academic year. I have to say that, and I want to make it clear for the record, the entire event was made possible by the financial support of our sponsors. So Dr. White, if we go back to our slide. So there was a planning team that did the recruitment, but I do want to call them out. So all of this was made possible by Clifford Beers, Connects, Orange Theory, WB Mason, First Student, New Haven Promise, City of New Haven, McDonald's, Southern Connecticut, Gas Company, Cinemark, Leap, McTivity, Arte, On the Spot Entertainment, New Haven Mental Health Team, Comcast, Regional Water Authority, Yale University, New Haven Fire Department, and the New Haven Police Department. We know we are dealing with financial challenges. If it had not been for these partners who answer or call to support holding a welcoming event for educators, this would have never been possible. I do want to highlight the team behind the planning and carrying it out, the planning that it took. So on the left, you have almost the entire team from, that works closely with Tiffany Jackson. Yeah, I don't see Tiffany. She's probably still recovering from all the running around that they had to do in terms of setup early this morning. On the right, you see many of our behavioral techs also who were supporting us with the grill and ensuring that everybody was helped and got a meal today, lunch. And working at our registration table also. You see here Danny Diaz who worked very hard again on the fundraising efforts. So again, I just want to say thank you to all of our partners for making it possible. I know that people didn't know what to expect. It was a change from opening the year sitting in an auditorium, listening to speech after speech after speech. We wanted to start the year more relaxed, but also to give our educators the opportunity to network, talk to one another. We are a large district. We are in forty-one different spaces. This truly allows for people to walk around, say hello, wish each other an amazing year. And I wish you, you had been there to witness the high energy and the fun that took place today. But again, thank you to our sponsors and thank you to the planning committee for making it possible. Today, as we start the year, just want to take this opportunity to give you an update on how we are doing as it relates to staffing. I am inviting Rolanda Booker, our coordinator of recruitment and retention, to come to the podium. She's going to be supporting me with the presentation. Dr. White, if you can get us up with this one? Again, this is a staffing update to show you where we are. As with anything, all the work that we are doing, thank you Lisa Flegler also for coming up, our director of human resources. All the work that we are doing, again, is grounded on our path to excellence, which serves as our roadmap so that we focus on the work to ensure that we can meet our targets at the end of our five years, at the end of 2029. And I'm just gonna continue. We could go to Slide three. Dr. White, can you bring me to Slide, Slide three? Before I have Lisa Flegler and Rolanda Booker share numbers with you, I want to make sure that I take an opportunity to set all of this data in context. You may recall that last year, we knew that we were going to have to work really, really hard to try to mitigate our budget. I shared projections as early as in the February, beginning of March. All along, I continued to share the outlook on how things were unfolding as it related to the state being able to make adjustments as it relates to the ECS formula. Afterwards, once we knew that none of that was going to happen, that all we had was the commitment of our state delegation in the City of New Haven, the work became, at least for me, the priority became how to hold on to every single one of our educators to ensure that we would not have to have the massive layoffs that I spoke about in terms of mitigating the budget. That took us through a rightsizing effort. Again, rightsizing, a common term used in the education field. It just speaks about making adjustments to staffing so that it aligns with current enrollment. So we went through that process to take a look how many kids were we projecting to be in every grade, in every school, across our district, and at our high school level, also taking a deep look at the number of courses that we have to offer to still meet requirements under graduation requirements for Connecticut. We went through all of that process, as you might recall, of rightsizing that allowed us to move people, sometimes having to close a classroom so that we could move that certified person into another vacancy. Ultimately, we ended up reducing a total of seventy-seven positions with this strategy. So I wanted to remind us all about that. We are also in the data you are going to see that we had a high number of retirements this year. We had a number of teachers who took the opportunity to take advantage of the benefits from extended medical benefits after serving twenty-five years or more. It had already been, uh, known that that was a benefit that was going to end at the end of academic year twenty-four, twenty-five. Those are benefits that do not come from BOE, they come from the city. But we had enough notice to, to say that those benefits were going to end. So many of our educators took advantage of that and decided to retire. We also, as we do every year, had a large number of resignations that happened during this Um, that happened um during this process as we're getting ready. Um, to open up the year. I do want to highlight though. In terms of data, that in twenty-three, twenty-four. Not last year, but the year before, we had a total number of three hundred and forty resignations. So when we put that in comparison to the medical benefits packet. I do want to share that for this year, this past year, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, we actually had less. We had three hundred and three. So we had three hundred and forty the year before and we had three hundred and three last year. Total number of resignations, including the people that took advantage of the um medical uh benefits. Um, next, in the next slide. I wanna share with you where we stay on right now and then again, I'm gonna hand it over to the team to share what we are doing. So the overall total number of vacancies, you may recall, I went through this process last year with you. Last year at this time, we had a hundred and ninety-eight. This year at this time, we ha- we have a hundred and fifty-six. But again, keep in mind the context, right, that we did the rightsizing effort. But again, uh less, one ninety-eight last year at this time, one fifty-six this year. We have filled all of our administrator um seats, meaning all of our assistant principals, principals. Directors and supervisors are in place. Uh, last year, we had three executive administrator openings. We still have two openings um. As we open up the year um this time. In terms of classroom teachers, meaning those core classes. Whether it be a kinder- kindergarten class, grade three, grade five. Whether it be a middle school teacher who's teaching ELA. Whether it be a science teacher at the high school level, what we call our core um classrooms. Last year at this time, we had seventy-seven vacancies. Right now, we have fifty. Significantly less. We still have work to do, but I wanna highlight that we are we are still in need of fifty classroom teachers. In terms of non-classroom teachers, um last year, we had a total of um nineteen. Again, these are certified teachers that are doing other work outside of just those um core classes. Uh, last year, we had nineteen. This year, we have nine. Paraeducators again is still an area of need. Last year, we had forty-five at this time openings. This year, we have thirty-five. And non-instructional, all the positions that support the teaching and the learning. Last year, we had fifty-four. This year, we have sixty. So again, I wanted to give you all of the context. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to my team.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rolanda Booker and I am the coordinator for recruitment and retention for New Haven Public Schools. Um, so I just wanna um continue what Dr. Nagro was saying and talking about our current vacancies and where we where we are. So these are some of the key um observations. Um, so overall, we have a decrease in most of our um. Staffing. So for our overall vacancies, we decreased approximately about twenty-one percent from August twenty-four to August twenty twenty-five. Um, for our classroom teachers, we decreased about thirty-five percent from August twenty-four to August twenty-five. Um, our non-classroom teachers, we significantly decreased from fifty-two to um from fifty-two percent from. A year ago this time to to currently. Um, paraeducators also is an area that we have decreased in. Um, one of the areas that we have to do um a lot of work with or some more work with and focus it. On is the non-instructional. So we have to find out what we're doing there. Look at what we have already in place, giving them some more support with professional development. Um, opportunities for advancement. So that's a focus that the HR department and I will be working on. Um, this this upcoming school year, twenty-five, twenty-six, to make sure that we make those teachers, those positions and non-instructional. Um, aspect feel supported and that they wanna stay with New Haven Public Schools.
Hi, just wanna also mention that at we do have teachers that are currently on extended leave FMLA and it's important to note that. And we do have those positions filled by degreed subs. So. Those was teachers that are currently out on leave, we will, those classrooms will be covered by degrees. So we had our HR team working on that as well.
So this slide shows our where we are currently with our priority shortage areas. And I will say that we are in a much, much better place than we were last year at this time with these with these areas. Um, if you look at our our science in particular, last year at this time, we had sixteen openings. Currently, we have four openings, which. You know, there's still work to be done, but that's a significant decrease in that area. Um, we're also looking at vacancy, sorry. Looking at the areas of where we have zero vacancies, um you know, T-Saw, um there's one um world language vacancy. Um, our bilingual education, those are technology, two technology uh classes, one computer class. Um, and one uh elementary um grade level four position. So we're still in a good position. With these priority shortage areas, we will still continue to focus on math and special education. We are recruiting for those positions daily. Um, you know, trying to get talent to come to New Haven Public Schools. So that is an area that we will still continue to focus on, but. Looking at our priority shortage areas, I think we're in good shape. I mean, as part of our retention retention and recruitment strategies, so one of the most important things is we wanna look at how we can expand our pathways. To have teach, people that want to be teachers have that opportunity. So. One of the things that we've done is we've started a para-pro uh para-pro class. Where we take people that want to start as paras, we give them a class at the um adult ed site. And then they they are given a voucher to take the para exam for free. So right now, we had a class of twenty in the in the spring. We had six onboarding paras. One just called me today and told me that she's starting at Davis. So. We're still, they're still coming on, which is a good thing. Um, we also wanna talk about expanding our teacher pathways. For the people that are already in the district. So we have partnered with a lot of credentialing um networks. We have Teach for America. We have the Teacher Residency Program through CREG. We have the Yale Fellowship. As well as um we have Southern Connecticut State University. That last year graduated seven um special ed teachers out of their masters of teaching. So we're continuing continuing to. Um, you know, network and partner with those um credentialing agencies that support us in supporting the students and filling those classrooms. And then the next thing is we're talking about growing our own. So again, I talked about the para-pro, but we also wanna talk about. Um, networking within our schools. So we have like the teacher prep programs through the high school. We wanna bring those kids that wanna be teachers. Into our district, following them when they get to college and then inviting them back. Um, we are also looking to expand outside of Connecticut because we have a lot of great talent outside of Connecticut. Um, partnering with some HBCUs as well. So that's in the network um of what we're starting to do for this year. Um, recruitment, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, initiate, sorry, miss um miss number five, but we are starting. Um, and to initiate a teacher mentor program. Because we have a lot of skilled and highly talented veteran teachers that can offer our newer teachers one to three years. A lot of expertise and a lot of support. So we are starting um a program, our new teacher mentorship. Where they will have a mentor teacher, a veteran teacher that they can go to, ask questions, um get advice from, um you know, throw out scenarios. The veteran teachers can help them, support them when it's time for report cards, um any questions that they have. So that's something that we feel will. Will give everyone value. The the veteran teachers are offering something to our newer teachers. So we. Think that that would be a good initiative that we're gonna start this year as well. Um, we've also established, reestablished the retention committee, which will have stakeholders from all of the the um. Positions in the district to come together. To to, you know, to uh to talk about concerns, suggestions, that we wanna make it a solution-based committee. We don't want it to be just talking about problems. We wanna be. Solution-based so that we can um, you know, address the issues that might come up. And that I think will help us with our retention as well. Cause if people feel heard, then they will want to stay where they're here. And we also, in the HR department, we want to talk about our improved customer service. So. We have added on an administrative assistant in our department. That is going to be, her focus is going to be onboarding and tracking new hires. So. If we stay in touch with our new hires and our newer teachers, our newer staff members. Then they're gonna feel valued and they're gonna feel that they want to stay here and in turn, give back to New Haven. Um, as well as maybe some of them seeing a pathway to um moving up on a a growth trajectory.
I I I also wanna mention, I, you've mentioned the good campaign, but. The good campaign, we wanna talk about all the good things that are happening within the district. There's so much good happening and I think it's always overshadowed by. One incident or a comment or something. So I think we need to really hone in upon all the great things that are happening today. Again. The chill, the today's Chill and Grill was a great event. It was an opportunity for networking for sort. E- educators and for our staff to see each other within the district. And so I that is gonna be one of our focuses. And again, we are thankful that we do have another member of the HR department. Whose focus is going to be on onboarding, on retting. And then she's also gonna be a part of the reestablished retention committee that we're gonna reignite to to ensure that. Why people are staying. We have a a lot more people staying than a lot more people leaving. So we do wanna focus on all the good that's happening within the district.
And I just wanna add, the good is, we have a student that was a Conti uh graduate. She was then a co-op graduate. She was part of the New Haven Promise. Um, she went to UConn, got her master's. First person in her family to um go to college. She is now going to be a fifth grade teacher at Conti. So we have a lot of good happening in in New Haven and we just have to make sure that we share it out. But I think, you know, she's a recruitment success, right? So. Any, any questions?
First of all, let me. Let me vigorously defend. And compliment. The Human Resource Office for being understaffed, but being overachieving.
Thank you.
And and let me tell you why that, and I hope it doesn't take more than a few minutes. You're dealing with some forces that you have no control over. In terms of bringing teachers into the system. And I like to point out just a few. First of all, the general pool of available teachers across the world has diminished. So that means that if you were picking berries, then the trees aren't producing the blueberries. Secondly. Based on my experience, running the largest teacher prep program in the in the state when I did do that. Many teacher candidates are not work interested in working in poor urban districts. And I'm not blaming them. But many of many of the students that I had had no experience. I was their first black teacher. And probably their first best teacher, but I won't toot my own horn. Uh, and I did a survey among a hundred fifty students at Sacred Heart. Only three expressed an interest in working in urban schools. And we actually got one of them, Pete Greco, who's an exemplary teacher at at Hill House. And a number of other Sacred Heart kids have come come here. Uh. Then, the ones that do take jobs with us often leave the district to take jobs in their hometowns. Or to be closer to home. And one of my dear friends, Mike Geritano, who was the principal in Fairfield County, he said, Ed, we used to steal teachers from New Haven. Well, you can't steal them. They 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 wanted to come. They paid a high salary. And uh and there are problems in those places too. And then, any salary that people complains about, those salaries were negotiated by our teachers' union. So if you negotiate this salary, then obviously you accepted the conditions. And then if you wanna turn around and then uh. Critique it, it was your decision. I think that's important to know. And our staff works night and day and weekends. To try to bring people into this school district and to try to keep them. But it's a little bit like a marriage. If they wanna go, they wanna go. And uh, that's unfortunate. But you do work above and beyond the call of duty. And I believe that at the Director of Human Resources is a graduate of our system. And there's a board member that's a graduate of our system. And there are many other people that work for the district that are graduates of our system. I believe one of our assistant room attendants. Sitting in the back is a graduate of our system. And I know, I don't know if Dr. Red- uh Redhannis is here, but. She, I thought that was her, yeah. Uh, I can't see as well as I used to. Uh, but the fact that we have so many distinguished graduates, not just working in our school district. But working in our hospitals, in the universities, in the in the mayor's office. I think that's a testament to the quality of our schools. And one other thing, Dr. Nagro was able to bring. The district together on a very great event. And for the record, it was not paid for by the school district. For the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Mr. Wilcox?
Uh, yes, just wanna say thank you very much for the presentation. Also wanna say, you know, as everybody knows, I work at Quinnipiac University and having just attended on Friday. Our convocation and had a chance to get together. Um, large group of the faculty. We also welcome in the incoming first-year students. Um, getting together for a social part of the event and to, you know, hear about some of the. The programs and priorities that the university is gonna be doing, all while seeing colleagues that work on a different campus, different buildings, I think is. Excellent, especially since uh this continued the tradition here at in New Haven schools of having um. Outside folks funded, uh which is, I think, has been the case for several years now. So I'm. I can't say enough good about those kinds of events, um despite some not liking them. Um, I do also wanna say, you know, I. The the retention numbers here, I I know you all are working with some great challenges. One of the. Challenges that we have is when we're trying to convince folks that when we say we need X number dollars for this budget. Or there's gonna be implications in terms of not being able to pay for have enough staff members to serve the needs of our students. That, you know, we have plenty of great educators and other staff in the district. And when you're start talking about layoffs. Um, and so on, then people start to go, hmm. And when you have a teaching shortage, I'm sure we've lost some folks just from the fact that we have to be honest about where things are. To try to paint the real picture. And I think that's always an issue. So, but I'm. Great to hear that efforts of the our HR department on these efforts. Um. I've just, you know, been on the board now for six years, just seen increased improvement and, you know, increased improvement on recruitment efforts, retention efforts. I think it's a testament to to you all and your predecessor and as far as retention specifically also. I think was quite effective in this and I just think that that's great. I'm glad to hear that the retention committee is getting back together, which I assume. Involves union representation as well, just to be able to, cause everybody's in this together and is interested in having great colleagues to work with. And just to echo the comments of my colleague down at the end of the table there. That to do this with the HR department with the size that it is, I remember years ago, somebody complained about HR. I think it was like a phone call didn't get answered. So it's great that you're having increased staff for that. And I go, hmm, and I take a look at the number of people that work in uh HR and talent services at Hartford. And severely, severe difference in staff numbers. And so the fact is, remains that just like other parts of New Haven schools. Our HR department, um, you know, hits above their um. Their average there, um being able to to perform in spite of a lot of these challenges, I think is great. So thank you for this. And I hope we have continued success in hiring this last group of teachers and other staff for this school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Just quickly, don't wanna belabor any points. Uh, thank you, one, for actually giving us a snapshot of where we here, where we are uh this time of year compared to last time. Um, and we can see where our progress is, where we still need to grow. And it's uh great seeing the uh number of open spots becoming filled. Uh, so thank you for that. And also thank you for identifying the priority areas and. Um, talking about uh like particular work that's getting, going into certain areas to make sure that we have those hires. Um, I'm also excited about the re-establishment of the retention committee and just the uh cross collaborative activity. That will happen. And also the improved customer service. Uh, and being able to hire someone who will help to work on that. Um. What I wrote is, uh, you know, HR is expanding its department's effort. You're focusing your strategy. Um, and you're increasing your responsiveness to all the things that you've heard and the wisdom. Uh, that you have from over the years and then also what stakeholders are contributing. Uh, so just thank you for um. Uh, being nimble in some ways, uh but also being a steady force that helps to put. Uh, staff uh into the district and also continue to provide. and also continue to provide professional development for staff, even creating new opportunities that were not previously there. Thank you for your work, Dr. Nogro. Thank you for leading the team, and good job. And also look forward to the number of vacancies closing and the students all having the teachers' staff that they need. Thanks.
That concludes my update.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the President's Report. Just that we are continuing our formal annual process of the superintendent evaluation and executive session. Next, teaching and learning report, facilities naming committee report. Dr. Joyner?
Thank you, Mr. President. And since we're doing all this positive reinforcement, I think we elected a genius to be our board president. And I'm so happy to serve under his leadership. Teaching and learning is not just the curriculum, lesson plans, and so on and so forth. It's also the work conditions and the learning conditions, the teaching conditions, the learning conditions that we have in our schools. And so what I'd like to do is to comment on what I observed at the August 18 finance meeting and how optimistic I am about how we're going to improve the environment, both outside of schools in terms of grounds and inside of schools. And I'd also like to cite the extraordinary leadership of Matt Wilcox and the extraordinary committee work of Ms. Downer, President Yarborough, and Mrs. Benitez. If you think about the credentials that they bring to the table, there might not be a finance committee anywhere that has an engineer, geneticist, a world-class librarian, and an internationally renowned educator on the finance committee. So the credentials are great. But the first thing that I observed that was clear in the meeting was that the committee was concerned about the quality of materials and workmanship in repairs, replacement, renovation, construction, and preventative maintenance. And that kind of covers all the areas. Because obviously, repairs are necessary when stuff breaks down or when there's vandalism. Replacement is necessary when stuff wears out. And renovation is necessary when it's important to change buildings so that they become more suitable for teaching and learning. And of course, construction is ground up. Preventive maintenance is critically important because that extends the life expectancy of the work as well as the materials. And unfortunately, the state, in all its wisdom, has not taken that in consideration when they allow us to build buildings and when they appropriate money, primarily the governor's office, not necessarily our representatives. And in that particular discussion, a question was raised about warranties. Do we have a central file of warranties that we could go to if something broke down and say, wait a minute, hold it, we don't have to buy this again. It didn't meet the standard, so you have to replace it. And of course, you think about your household. If you buy a television that has three-year warranty, it breaks down in two years, and it's not something you did, then Panasonic has to replace the TV or whomever you bought it from. That was very, very important, that now that is a legitimate and a recurring agenda on the finance committee. And then the next big issue was performance evaluation of services. We evaluate our teachers. We evaluate our parents. We evaluate all of our employees. But until recently, we had not evaluated service providers that we contract with. And you have to apply the same standards and evaluate those service providers as you do staff. That you have to have, if you have to have a standard that you ask them to perform to, you have to document that standard through pictures and other things. And you have to let them know upfront what a good job is. You have to let them know upfront, and it has to be in writing. And it has to have quality indicators in the same way that there are quality indicators associated with good teaching, good counseling, good leadership. And there are national organizations that deal with that, that we can rely on, specialized professional organizations that we can rely on for that. And in doing those performance evaluations, those evaluations have to be in accordance with ethically and legally defensible standards. And we get in trouble if we say something that's not legally defensible. And so we have to use the same standards with evaluating our vendors as we do with evaluating our professional and paraprofessional and service providers. We have to give them due process. We have to document the performance. And we have to have feedback sessions with them to let them know what went well, what didn't, or what even didn't happen in some cases. So I was pleased to see that, and that's going to really improve the physical environment. The thing that really got me excited and additions at is that we're in the process now of developing instrumentation and observation tools to assess preconditions regarding our schools so that we have a baseline to determine whether or not the precondition has remained the same or has it improved. And those baselines conditions are very important. A good example, one of the committee members asked a question about where you put the floor in, but did you fix the roof? Because if you put the floor in and the roof is still a problem, then that's not cool because it's a real problem. And that's an example of systemic thinking, that there's a large system. There's a large physical system that has to be coordinated and maintained, and it's interactive. And that if we don't do something over here, then the good stuff that we did over here is going to be compromised and eventually diminished. And so, Dr. White, let me just take my hat off to you. You know, I love you like a brother. And you are one of the most honest and straightforward and organized persons. And the fact that you're doing that now, you're developing that instrumentation so we can say, well, what did the floor look like before we repaired it? What does it look like when it's repaired? And then we take into account that if we let the roof leak, then the adhesive might not hold up on the floor. Or it might warp, or so on and so forth. In education, we paid more attention to the teaching, the classroom and teaching and learning than we have done. And that's everybody in education, not just us, to the infrastructure around education, the physical infrastructure. And that would be the same for cities as well, highways and sewage systems. And all those things are critically important. So we're developing those instruments, and AI can do that in a heartbeat. It can draw from all of the specialized professional organizations. It can give you all the standards. It can give you the quality indicators. It can give you a Likert scale, and it can do that within five minutes. I know because I've done it. So that's going to really, even though we're a small group, a lean group of specialized professionals, that we can do that fairly quickly. And if you know about it in advance, you'll know whether or not the instrument that it develops is appropriate. Now, we're a board that only evaluates the superintendent. And since that's true, then we have to rely on the superintendent and staff to evaluate anybody that works for us. And we have to be very careful because when we discuss performances, we should not be discussing performances. We should allow, we should ask questions, and they have a right, we have a right to have answers to those questions. But the job of evaluating the performance of vendors and service providers and anybody else is really on the superintendent and staff. And for the first time since Will Clark has left, we now have a person, and Dr. White, that understands systems, understands schools, and understands the impact of the physical environment on the learning environment. The other thing that I observed that is really great is that our new chief financial officer, Senor Hernandez, he gave one of the most concise, rational, informative, and detail-oriented presentations. It really would be a case study in how you help a school board understand the changing numbers in your account balances and what the forces are that account for those changing numbers. Now, if the people at the state level were smart, they would also begin to see how when you bring more charter schools into an urban environment, you create more work for the regular public school system, and they're not reimbursed for that work. But you also rob Peter and you pay somebody. I don't know if it's Paul. And that has an impact on it. So what Mr. Hernandez did was he talked about the challenges in the general budget and other aspects of the budget, how at various sectors of time across the school year, how these balances fluctuate. And he also talked about something that's critically important is the decline of support for public education from the federal government. Under one administration, we get ESAR, we get ESAR grants that helped us out a great deal. But Dr. Tracy was smart enough not to say this is a permanent job for people she hired. And Dr. Nogro has created that tradition, that she has continued that. And his tracking skills, his teaching skills, the way he delivered it was exemplary. And that stands on the good work that was done by Linda Hannens when she was here. And he made us aware of multiple variables and scenarios and the uncertainty of forecasting. The uncertainty of forecasting. And if you look at some of the major drivers of cost of public education, special education being one, and the fact that we don't have a budget for infrastructure improvement and development, we have to figure that out for ourselves. And so I want to give a shout out to him for his user-friendly, I would say charismatic, presentation. And so typically, in order to really understand how you build an organization, you have to look at whether or not each tentacle in the organization is efficient. You have to look at the context that it's embedded in. And then you have to say, well, you know, we're designed properly. It's an engineering issue. We're designed properly for this. And Mr. Wilcox makes the comment on a regular basis that we're understaffed. Instead of having six light bulbs, we might have three. And if you use that metaphorically to talk about some of our staff, we're down staff members. But for the last several years, the superintendent, Dr. Tracy and Dr. Nogro, has done the work of two to three people. And again, if you look at other systems like ours, that doesn't happen. So, and of course, there are challenges in all aspects of city government as a result of our being underfunded and overused, and in many cases, underappreciated. And then the last thing that's important is that in order to move a system and to do the things we're trying to do with improving teaching and learning, we have to be very careful about how we talk to each other. And we also have to be very careful about how we allow people to talk to us. This is a business meeting. It's not a gripe session. It's not a misery section. It's not a place where you can go and talk about yourself and what your needs are. It is a place for us to do the business of the board in accordance with the state mandate to represent the education interests of children. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Any discussion? Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Next, the Citywide School Building Committee and the Finance and Operations Committee and the Head Start Report. Mr. Wilcox?
All right. Thank you. Head Start, that meeting is needing to be rescheduled, and so that will be rescheduled for sometime in the next week or two. The Citywide Building and Stewardship Committee, we did meet, I believe it was August 18. Just wanted to say that the facilities report should be posted. And so in addition to hearing that, which is a reminder, it's an updated way that they're doing the facilities report. There's more pictures of work done. We even had video clips showing some of the work that's been done and some of the things that are happening in the district, so recommend people take a look at that. In addition to that, we've already talked about the resolutions to close out building projects that we mentioned that earlier, and there will be more of those in the future. And then finally, for Finance and Operations, as was been mentioned by my colleague, Dr. Joyner, we did hear a very excellent end year report. It's preliminary at this point. It'll become final in the next, I think, sometime in September. Currently projecting a $2.4 million deficit, but that number is going to change over the next couple of weeks as final numbers come in, final bills and final income statements and so on. So we'll hit more about that, but I agree it was an excellent presentation. In addition to that, we also had our Transportation Director provide information related to her department. Two things, this is in a memo that's attached to the materials for this meeting. They distributed 18,711 Connecticut Transit cards, bus cards, to students. These are going out to all high school and some supervisors for after-school activities, getting to jobs, and so on. So that is a good thing, that they received extra state grant from the state for the Connecticut Transit. So they were able to distribute those passes through the different high schools, and they're going to continue to do that. And also, a brief update on the electric bus grant that you all might recall from about a year and a half ago. She has received an update on the head of electrification for First Student. They've met with EPA. They're awaiting decision of the funding of the awards, which I hope will still happen, even though current administration doesn't seem to like things that don't run on diesel. But hopefully, the electric bus awards will still continue. And First Student is also working on the infrastructure issues that they have and how they would charge these buses if they get them at one of their bus depots in town. So those are the three reports.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Any discussion? Thank you. Seeing none, the Governance Report. Dr. Benitez?
Yes, good evening, members of the Board of Education and the public. Just, we will have our next meeting tomorrow, August 26. So I have, I don't have a report. As you know, we have approved our AI policy at the August 11 meeting. And I just want to remind everyone that as part of the Governance Committee, we work on policy. And part of that is to remind all members of the community that this Board of Education is a board composed of seven members, that none of us individually is the one in charge, but that we are a team that works together and that supports each other with the knowledge and the information that will support our work. That's one thing. The other thing I wanted to remind everybody, especially the public, that as we continue to listen to public comment, we will always be conscious about difficulties. However, we have a highly trained staff in all levels of this organization, staff that are certified by the State of Connecticut to do their work, and that we hope that the public understands that it is through the channels that the Board of Education policies have put together. Board of Education policies have put together for the staff and also the law of, in Connecticut helps everybody understand that the staff who are employees of this district are those who can advocate for you, who can help you resolve the issues for your children and other, and the adults involved in this very important work we all do. I want to congratulate all of staff members that took play, took part of the celebration today. I cannot imagine starting a school year without greeting my colleagues when I was an educator because after that, after that, we had to work hard. And I know these people have been working hard even before when we have such a good report about the hiring this summer. But I want to again let everybody know that this Board of Education is a team of seven and that we all support our superintendent and that we all support our president to be able to bring things to the agenda when necessary. So thank you and hoping that we continue doing this great work. A very good evening.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez. Any discussion? Thank you, Dr. Benitez. Next is the Food Service Task Group Report. As for myself, and I thank Mr. Wilcox for helping to lead the last meeting. There, I just want to highlight two things that we discussed. One is, there was just a report on the good collaboration that was happening with the nursing department for the city and the school and the food service department in helping families get any food modification requests in for their students. It's extra work that the families need to do and it's good collaboration that is happening across the district. And then also, the tireless and very important collaborators that worked for our Food Gap did serve families and collaborated with families to share meals in between when the summer meal program ended for the district and when the school year begins. And I look forward to the next meeting where we can hear a report of how that went. Any discussion? Thank you. Seeing none. I move that we enter executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 1-206B for the discussion concerning the evaluation of Dr. Madeline Negron, Superintendent of Schools. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. That's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? We will vote. Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mr. Ailey?
Yes.
Mayor Ellicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion carries. We're in executive session. Thank you.
Ah, que solidar.
Thank you. The board has returned from executive session. No votes were taken. Uh, welcome a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mr. Ailey?
Yes.
Mayor Ellicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. We are adjourned. Thank you everyone.